Good morning, everybody. I have 9:00 AM. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance to the room for public review at any point. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business is to open with prayer, and if you would, please join me. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon Lincoln County, the citizens here in our larger region. Lord, we ask that you continue to guide the members of this Board of Commissioners as we carry out the work of the people. Let our decisions be pleasing in your eye. Let them be thoughtful, considerate. Father, we ask that you continue to bless and protect the members that provide us our freedoms, that ensure our freedoms, our military members, both stateside and abroad in the conflicts that are going on. Father, just continue to protect them, bring them home safely. Lord, I ask that you put your shield of comfort and protection around our first responders and our law enforcement personnel as well. We pray all these things. In Jesus' name, amen. Next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held November 7, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held November 7, 2022.
Motion by Hughley, second by Woodruff. Any further comments or corrections? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Next order of business is the claims and treasures receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts.
Motion by Wulver, second. Second by Weems. Any further discussion on this?
I would just like to make note of the great activity on the interest on investments from the bank accounts that our treasurer took action on earlier this year. Great return there.
I was looking at that myself, and the question is, that's monthly, but...
I didn't tell you. I don't know.
I think it is.
I think it is.
Yes, it is monthly. And this is from October.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hi.
Next order of business is to receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county clerk in the amount of $950.62.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wulver. Need further comments or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Next order of business is to receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county clerk in the amount of $950.62.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wulver. Any further comments or corrections? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hi.
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 Next order of business is the claims and treasures receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts.
Motion by Wulver, second. Second by Weems. Any further discussion on this?
I would just like to make note of the great activity on the interest on investments from the bank accounts that our treasurer took action on earlier this year. Great return there.
I was looking at that myself, and the question is, that's monthly, but...
Didn't tell you. I don't know.
I think it is.
I think it is.
Yes, it is monthly. And this is from October.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hi.
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 Next order of business is to receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county clerk in the amount of $950.62.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wulver. Need further comments or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hi.
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 Next order of business is to receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county clerk in the amount of $950.62.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wulver. Need further comments or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hi.
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 It's like January, Wulver.
With the election, we had no one manage offices.
It's hard to transition.
I'm thinking we might be retired for a while. Then my friend Jimmy Backmuster sent me a picture of his tax bill yesterday.
That's great.
I'd like to keep it, great. These ones, yeah. Yeah. There is some interest today, unfortunately. Unfortunately, I would have rather been back to the dates where we were making no interest. Then we didn't have that 10% inflation. There are actually 7.8%.
Interesting.
What's the XP?
This might be attached.
I think there were two ahead of this.
There are two together, yeah. That oddball issue goes with those.
But those numbers did not total that.
One is for '20 and one is for 2021.
Okay. So which one are we signing? This is the cover sheet we should have signed.
I didn't even scroll it there.
I did neither.
Same amount. This is the old sheet. This is the new sheet. So should we just get rid of this one?
Yeah, let's just get rid of the old sheet.
I'm gonna give you that one back. Let's start over. Good catch, Chris.
Roll me a sticker.
I don't even lay through the ones that go by weight.
I like it when they're just fat, but not necessarily that middle.
Ooh, these are big, huh?
Yeah.
Big number.
Yeah.
Switch those vehicles all to electric.
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 You gotta hold E on.
I think there's a pipeline up north that would help with that.
Mr. Chairman, I have one of those.
I don't even lay through them. I just throw them by weight.
I like it when they're just fat, but not necessarily that middle.
Ooh, these are big, huh?
Yeah.
Big number.
Yeah.
Switch those vehicles all to electric.
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 You gotta hold E on.
I think there's a pipeline up north that would help with that.
I just decided to have one of those.
Well, that's a good question for a clerk's office. I assume they had them, because the old claim files had them, but... It's probably sufficient that they name an address and are... What do we have on this?
Uh, we know. Some yes, Jason.
Thank you. Tax-free, right? No, it's not. Jesus.
Call me, yeah. She's the one, right? I bet I did the right thing, Scott. Somewhere. Yeah.
Tim Bryan and Jason, either one. I don't have the mechanics. Say, for example, over there, side door, trying to carry into the parts or stuff. Oh, yeah. I try to do everything like you. It's usually... Got you. Well, you know, and I don't know enough to even know what to do on this, but... Because some of their invoices are so big and confusing. You know, seals and bearings and rings and stuff, that's kind of stiff, I think. That's a master cylinder, you know. Might not even be a regular master cylinder for that. Anyway, I would just curious. And we might have been backed up on other stuff.
Keep on hearing jokes from that end of the table. What's going on?
It makes sense. Sometimes people think it's easy, you know, pulling seals and old rings and stuff. Sometimes it's just not as easy.
I also think our shop kind of limits what they can do. They're on the real Z. You know, the heavier stuff.
Well, but you know, that's changed. For 20, 30 years, a bit of those mechanics. And that's why I was asking that now. What kind of backlog we have.
Yes.
They have a bunch of stuff in there, too.
Something I keep needing to ask, and I need to write this down, so I do. He gets a professional disc. I wonder if they give that to accountants.
It is 9:15. We will now recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, we will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance to the room for public review at any point. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting that was held November 7, 2022.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting that was held November 7, 2022.
Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Woodruff. Any further comments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. County assessor is indicating there are none today. Moving on to motor vehicle tax exemption applications is submitted by the county treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the applications for exemption for motor vehicles from the Salvation Army, both religious and charitable organization and religious and charitable purposes, for the following vehicles: a 2016 Ford Transit, a 2006 International Truck, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, a 2002 PH2 van, 2006 van trailer, and a 2014 Ford Flex, all recommended for approval by the deputy treasurer. And that would be my motion.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on those applications from Salvation Army? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye. Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. County assessor is indicating there are none today. Moving on to motor vehicle tax exemption applications is submitted by the county treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the applications for exemption for motor vehicles from the Salvation Army, both religious and charitable organization and religious and charitable purposes, for the following vehicles: a 2016 Ford Transit, a 2006 International Truck, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, a 2002 PH2 van, 2006 van trailer, and a 2014 Ford Flex, all recommended for approval by the deputy treasurer. And that would be my motion.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on those applications from Salvation Army? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption for motor vehicles from the Salvation Army, both religious and charitable organization and religious and charitable purposes, for the following vehicles: a 2016 Ford Transit, a 2006 International Truck, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, a 2002 PH2 van, 2006 van trailer, and a 2014 Ford Flex, all recommended for approval by the deputy treasurer. And that would be my motion.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on those applications from Salvation Army? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption by the First Church of the Nazarene for a 1999 Ford van used exclusively for religious purposes. And it has been reviewed and approved by Deputy County Treasurer Sherry Newton.
Second. Motion by Wulver, second by Woodruff. Any further comments on this application by First Church of the Nazarene? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption for motor vehicles for three units for the Region Two Human Resources here in North Flat: a Chrysler 2006 van, a Dodge 2008 sport van, and a Ford 2011 Goshen E350. These are used for transportation of clients to and from day program and for staff travel to programs, meetings, et cetera. This has been approved by Deputy Treasurer Sherry Newton.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Wulver. Any further comments on this application from Region Two Human Services? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye. Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. County assessor is indicating there are none today. Moving on to motor vehicle tax exemption applications is submitted by the county treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the applications for exemption for motor vehicles from the Salvation Army, both religious and charitable organization and religious and charitable purposes, for the following vehicles: a 2016 Ford Transit, a 2006 International Truck, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, a 2002 PH2 van, 2006 van trailer, and a 2014 Ford Flex, all recommended for approval by the deputy treasurer. And that would be my motion.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on those applications from Salvation Army? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption for motor vehicles from the Salvation Army, both religious and charitable organization and religious and charitable purposes, for the following vehicles: a 2016 Ford Transit, a 2006 International Truck, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, a 2002 PH2 van, 2006 van trailer, and a 2014 Ford Flex, all recommended for approval by the deputy treasurer. And that would be my motion.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on those applications from Salvation Army? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Chairman, I would move to approve the application of exemption for motor vehicles for three units for the Region Two Human Resources here in North Flat: a Chrysler 2006 van, a Dodge 2008 sport van, and a Ford 2011 Goshen E350. These are used for transportation of clients to and from day program and for staff travel to programs, meetings, et cetera. This has been approved by Deputy Treasurer Sherry Newton.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Wulver. Any further comments on this application from Region Two Human Services? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye. Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. County assessor is indicating there are none today. Moving on to motor vehicle tax exemption applications is submitted by the county treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the applications for exemption for motor vehicles from the Salvation Army, both religious and charitable organization and religious and charitable purposes, for the following vehicles: a 2016 Ford Transit, a 2006 International Truck, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, a 2002 PH2 van, 2006 van trailer, and a 2014 Ford Flex, all recommended for approval by the deputy treasurer. And that would be my motion.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on those applications from Salvation Army? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption for motor vehicles from the Salvation Army, both religious and charitable organization and religious and charitable purposes, for the following vehicles: a 2016 Ford Transit, a 2006 International Truck, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, a 2002 PH2 van, 2006 van trailer, and a 2014 Ford Flex, all recommended for approval by the deputy treasurer. And that would be my motion.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further comments on this application by First Church of the Nazarene? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Chairman, I would move to approve the application of exemption for motor vehicles for three units for the Region Two Human Resources here in North Flat: a Chrysler 2006 van, a Dodge 2008 sport van, and a Ford 2011 Goshen E350. These are used for transportation of clients to and from day program and for staff travel to programs, meetings, et cetera. This has been approved by Deputy Treasurer Sherry Newton.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Wulver. Any further comments on this application from Region Two Human Services? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye. Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. County assessor is indicating there are none today. Moving on to motor vehicle tax exemption applications is submitted by the county treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the applications for exemption for motor vehicles from the Salvation Army, both religious and charitable organization and religious and charitable purposes, for the following vehicles: a 2016 Ford Transit, a 2006 International Truck, a 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, a 2002 PH2 van, 2006 van trailer,
trying to get the bugs out, you know.
Yeah.
Jerry, on that item we talked about last week, we buried a gel. Sort of did happen, you know, on the level we were talking about. You made a call under what no issues, but Booker sort of was thinking. It does seem funny how each state, you know, some things spread, I guess, some don't. It could be some kind of, you know, finding messages that they would try to do, but obviously doesn't happen.
Okay, it is 9:30. We will move on to our 9:30 agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider action on an application by Don Jessup for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a special events venue in a TA1 Transitional Agricultural District on property located as at 17863 East State Farm Road and described as Lot 1 Mildred Administrative Subdivision, excuse me, of part of Government Lot 6 in the Fort McPherson Reservation in Section 6 Township 12 North, Range 28 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. I'm going to have Judy Clark kind of summarize what happened with the Planning Commission meeting and what this application entails. And then is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have the applicant come up and kind of explain what it is they're wanting to do, and then we'll open it up to public comment at that time. But as of right now, the public hearing is open.
Okay. Good morning. Judy Clark, Planning Administrator for Lincoln County. You should have received a copy of the review comments, and attached to that, you'll see a resolution passed by the Lincoln County Planning Commission. Again, attached to that, you're going to find a site plan that was drawn for what they are planning on doing on that property, along with a couple of location maps to kind of give you an idea of where this is going to be located, and a copy of a letter from Jason Schultz, the Lincoln County Road Superintendent. So, the applicant has generally stated that they're wanting to provide a worry-free location for any type of gathering. The facility would eventually include sand volleyball court, outdoor theaters, sunset gatherings, fire pits, just an event venue, basically. The Lincoln County Planning Commission did approve the request with some conditions, and you can see those conditions on the cover sheet and also on the attached resolution as Exhibit A. They are requiring a fence to be constructed around the entire perimeter, with the exception of the driveway. They are requiring them to remove a lean-to and some trees for parking. They also put a requirement in that they cannot have a bathroom or kitchen without addressing the septic issue, and with doing that, if they do add bathrooms and need to update the septic, they would have to come back to the Lincoln County Planning Commission for approval. And that occupancy of those buildings or of the event site cannot exceed what the approved parking is. The approved parking would be what is on that site plan.
So I count 49 stalls?
50, I think, but 49 might be close. I'll have to look again.
And what does that equate to in numbers of people?
Right.
Usually, there's about 2.5 is statistically what they say per vehicle.
But is that what we call for, planning zoning? Or is there a code that says two and a half on this type of parking, or is it just sort of a rule of thumb?
So, the parking usually, when it comes to an event center, is based on the occupancy of the building. Now, this site, the occupancy of the building could be far greater than the 50 parking stalls, but since this site is so small, they've limited it to the number of parking stalls.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
So actually, the building would probably allow for two or 300.
Because I didn't know if they went seven and a half square foot, what kind of event they were having, so it's based on that number. Thank you very much.
Yep, yep.
Appreciate it.
When you do make the motion, I did put some different options that you have at the bottom of that cover sheet that shows you some of the options, but when you do make a motion, please follow the guideline that's on the second page and make sure you read through the entire thing down to based on the fact. His choice, not mine.
We are a branch of government. I don't know if reasonable is in our.
But, so that's all I have, if you have any questions for me. The applicant is in the audience.
Judy, if we would approve it with the first option, where we approve it as presented by the Planning Commission in the attached resolution, and we just tie everything together that you've walked them through, so that all would be in force as far as the conditions require, correct?
Yes, you would want to read that first motion where I get on that second page where it goes through, and it reiterates all of the conditions that are listed there. Just read through that entire motion, if that is the way that you decide to do it.
Okay.
Chairman, Judy, item number three, the septic issue.
Yeah.
Is that something that is a concern now? Is there a capacity issue that has been brought up?
So, right now, the septic that is there is constructed for a single-family living, not for a capacity of what would be more of a commercial-type use. The applicant has stated that any event that they have, they are going to have porta-potties there for use. They're not going to have a bathroom, per se, facility, just because of the capacity. Now, the reason the Planning Commission put that on there is if they did expand, that septic would have to be enlarged. And being that it's only an acre lot, that's going to be really difficult to do. Now, is it possible? Maybe, depending on, you know, how they construct it, where they put the leach field, that sort of thing. But that was their concern, was if you do add actual bathroom facilities that are going to be done into a septic tank, that they would want to review that first.
So, the portable units are acceptable for what is being considered at this point in time?
Yeah. We don't have regulations on portable units as far as our zoning code goes, in a commercial area. You can't do it in your residential area, but in a commercial area.
As I recall, that's a fairly low-lying area down there, so groundwater issues could be a problem.
Yeah, it's possible.
One more question for my, the fence. What was the reason for the fence and what type of fence is being asked for?
So, the reason for the fence is because this is a one lot that basically sits right in the middle of a cornfield. So, on all three sides, or basically all four sides, it's surrounded by an agricultural property that is row crop. So, the purpose of the fence was to try and decrease, I guess, liability for both property owners, so that the people that are attending the event aren't parking in the neighbor's cornfield, or, you know, doing anything in the neighbor's cornfield, that they're going to the event and they are contained in that event area. We did not, Planning Commission did not put the type of fence on there, because that's really getting into the weeds. And if people are gonna, you know, if you would mandate a privacy fence, that's going to be extremely costly to the person, and especially if you mandate a, you know, vinyl six-foot privacy fence, that's going to be very, very costly to the person, especially on an acre lot, because that's going to be a lot of fencing. It's just meant to kind of contain the people on that property, so they didn't get into particulars on the type of fence.
Okay. Is there any concern in regards to if a conditional liquor license might be applied for in the future as far as gaining access from the perimeter?
I'm not sure that was even discussed at the Planning Commission level.
All right, we may have you come back up.
Okay, no problem.
If any applicants like to come forward.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you'd state your name and sign in for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Don Jessup.
Okay. Sign-in sheet's right there. Morning, Don, how are you today?
I'm good.
So, what, give us the 30,000-foot view. What's going on?
Okay, so, I, my husband and I lived on that property for about 10 years, and then he passed away, and I can't sell it. So, it just wasn't in my cards to sell it, so I decided that I wanted to make a wedding venue.
Okay.
And, so now I'm here taking the steps, the wedding venue.
Do you still live on the property, Don?
I do not. I bought a house in town.
So, will there be somebody living on the property all the time, or it'll just be, people will be there for events all day?
Yes, and the house will be an Airbnb, so the bridal party can stay in the house.
Okay, nice.
Tell me, excuse me, tell me about the building that you have down there, size and type?
So, it's a 50 by 48 building, metal, old barn-style looking, and then there's a 50 by 20 dance pad on the back.
The floor of the building is concrete?
Yes.
Just an open building, no, obviously no restrooms or kitchen in there?
Right.
Excuse me, did you recently add a hard surface lane into that property?
Yes.
Do you think that the portable units for restrooms are going to suffice for the wedding venue?
I do. I've been to several weddings where there was like 200 people, and that's what they had. They had Charlie's plumbing, bringing out their units, and I'm assuming pick 'em up.
Okay. Are you operating an Airbnb now?
No.
But this is all going to come together?
Yeah.
As one unit?
Yeah.
It ought to be a nice draw with the volleyball court and other things.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's kind of the thing. It's, we, I put this barn onto a shop that was already there, so the whole shop on that side is going to be concrete with the fire pit and the outdoor theater and stuff like that.
Okay. Any other questions for Don Jessup?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
General?
No.
Okay. If we have any other questions, I may call you back up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Good morning.
I'm Bruce Dodson. I reside at 12493 South Hanson Road. I'm a co-owner of Agro Affiliates, and I represent the landowner that surrounds this project.
Okay. Only Bruce.
Good morning. Initially, we were opposed to this project as proposed to the Planning Commission. However, with the Planning Commission adding the fence requirement around the perimeter to help limit trespass and hazards to their guests, because within 100 feet of this project, the building, we have a high-voltage pivot power panel.
Okay.
And as events and parties occur, sometimes it becomes a challenge for people to exceed Therefore, we're not going to oppose Don's proposal, as long as there is in fact a fence that does limit trespass and protects her guests. There's a couple hazards. One is somebody gaining access to the high-voltage power panel, climbing on the pivot, a small child wandering into a tassel and cornfield, and now we've got a search and rescue project on our hands. So long as they're contained, it appears that they're going to be self-governed with no resident manager. The one request that I have, and Don and I haven't had a chance to visit about this, and that is the commercial liability policy that would be required for this kind of activity in a agricultural setting surrounded by a cornfield. That's our concerns.
Bruce, did you have a conversation about the fence with Don?
We did have a brief conversation after the last Planning Commission meeting. I believe in private property rights. I believe that Don ought to be able to do what Don wants to do on her property, given the fact that she's the owner and paying taxes. However, our concern is more from a safety standpoint and anticipating unintended consequences that could happen with actions of the guests.
Okay. Okay. No, I think we all agree, you know, property owners have a right to do what they want on their property, as long as it meets the confines of law and regulation. I would hope that the fence serves as a good enough physical barrier to prevent, or at least reduce and mitigate the chances of people trespassing and causing bodily harm to themselves, so I'm glad you guys.
My hope as well.
Okay, good deal.
Thanks. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this? Going once, jump.
Judy. The fence, I'm guessing, could be a single-strand barbed wire with a car battery. Could probably be a single, I mean, single-strand electric wire. Probably be a single-strand electric wire with no juice to it, you know, would be a And if, in fact, I don't know how we interact, I guess we can make a comment on the liability issues on the insurance, you know, on our end. I guess mine isn't so much necessarily one from the county viewpoint, it's just that I think everybody's sort of on the same page. They want to do it, do it right, do it safe. I just, if, in fact, the, as Mr. Dodson mentioned, a little child goes under the fence or something, there still has to be a realization that where one liability stops, and the other liability starts. I mean, and I'm not sure that's something that we can necessarily legislate. I'm not sure that's our place. That's two private landowners, and that's a different civil matter, in my opinion, so just that's the only comment I have. So just that's the only comment I have. So I had to come all the way up here to, I guess, listen to that.
It's okay.
Sorry Judy.
So there isn't any guidelines on a specific type of fence, just a fence?
Planning Commission just stated a fence around the perimeter. There you go.
Well, well, that's a little bit vague because as Mr. Hugley said, I could put up a single strand of electric wire on little small T-posts. That's a fence, that isn't gonna keep a vehicle.
You can put it four foot high if you wanted.
Now, there, there was a lot of discussion about that at Planning Commission, but ultimately it was decided that, you know, it's, it's theirs. They can decide what type of fence is going to work.
This is a situation where we have to trust that good neighbors will be good neighbors, in my opinion. I think that they understand the intent. I would hope, Ms. Jessup, that you understand what is, is being asked. I don't think that we want to get into the nitty-gritty on dictating type and material of construction. So that's, that's just my thoughts on, on the topic there. What is your envision for that, Dawn?
I was just gonna say this.
Absolutely.
Do you want me to come up there?
Yeah, please.
Please.
Okay, so it's not gonna be a single wire, for sure. It'll be a chain length, either four or six foot high.
Okay, there you go.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do, is there gonna be any need for roadwork? Is your existing driveway gonna be suitable?
It's already done.
Already done, very good.
I probably got the horse before the cart on that one. There was a cart before the horse, however you say that.
It sounds like you've explored a lot of options already.
I did.
Good. Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, I will close the public hearing at 9:49 a.m. And we will move on to consider action on this item. Suppose my, my viewpoint is, is I hope that any business entity that seeks to create something and do business in Lincoln County, that they're successful, that it's a safe operation and that they consider it to their, their neighbors. Good neighbors being good neighbors is important. So should this pass, I wish you every success in your endeavors. And just to continue to ask that you work with your neighbors to make sure that, you know, any issues are, are addressed and mitigated and that you have a safe operation. So. Sounds like it should provide for a good time for people planning small events.
You ready?
I am.
Chairman, I've moved to approve the application by Dawn Jessup for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a special events venue in a TA1 Transitional Agricultural District on property located at 17863 East State Farm Road and described as Lot 1 Mildred Administrative Subdivision of part of Government Lot 6 in the Fort McPherson Reservation in Section 6 Township North, Township 12 North, Range 28 West of the 6PM Lincoln County, Nebraska, as recommended by the Lincoln County Planning Commission. And all elements of the application are complied with and with the following conditions. One, a fence be constructed around the entire perimeter with the exception of the driveway. Two, remove lean-to and trees for parking. Three, cannot have bathroom or kitchen without addressing septic issue and addressing this board. Four, occupancy cannot exceed approved parking. Based on the following factual findings to wit. One, the application complies with the current Lincoln County zoning regulations. Two, the application complies with the current Lincoln County subdivision regulations. And three, the application is in conformance with the current Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan and Lincoln County zoning map. That is my motion.
Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Buhler?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Judy, thanks to you and the committee for the good work. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
Do we have anything we need to sign on this? It's just gonna be a group call. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. Discuss and consider acceptance of a bid for three new half-ton Lincoln County Department of Roads. These are, we received one bid last week. We allowed our highway superintendent and his staff to review the bid. Jason, what do you have for us today?
Well, we have.
Have your bodyguards with you.
Yeah, brought the muscle today. We did check into some of the state of Nebraska contracts that are currently out there. And after reviewing some of those, comparing back to the original bid that we did receive, a few things were pretty apparent in comparing the specs and everything. The, the bid we did receive last Monday was for some SSV vehicles, which are specifically designed for law enforcement purposes. So a lot of the items and their specs are really not geared to what we're looking for for the intended use of the vehicles.
Okay.
So I guess it would be our recommendation that we would utilize one of the current state of Nebraska contracts for, now I don't have it in front of me. I think you guys received a copy of that one as well.
Yeah, I do.
For the, for 2023 Ford F-150 crew cab, four-wheel drive.
Jason, it looks like the price on here, $57.95, is that correct?
$57.95, correct.
And what was the bid amount last week?
Uh, those were $39,494.
Okay, and I remember there was, um, there's a significant amount of difference. And I don't know where the confusion came in from, was it from Janssen's? Is that where the bid came from or was it from somebody else?
Janssen.
Okay. And so have you, have you at least called Janssen's to say, what's, did you not read our specs? Or what's, what's, what's going on?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I talked to him quite a bit and they bid the pickups that they felt were available. In fact, called me and asked if we even wanted them to bid the SSVs. And we kind of went back and forth on it and decided to go ahead and see where the bid came in. And then the more, yeah, the more we look at the specs, they're, the, the dollars are definitely different and the pickups as well are definitely a lot different. The SSV, from our understanding, does not have the seats we expect. It'll just be two bucket seats in the front. They have the shorter box. They're geared towards law enforcement, really. They, I think it's less stuff for them to take out of them, to add their special equipment.
Yeah, that's where the big difference is in the, the price. You know, we, our bid specs that we put out there, we try to leave pretty broad and open so that we were not excluding any one or, or any vehicle that someone might want to consider for us. So they did state the, the exclusions in there. But after, yeah, looking at the price, there's, there's a vast difference. But it's really, it's not comparing apples to apples. They're two totally different vehicles. You know, the tow capacities are quite a bit different.
Right, so we, in other words, we don't know their bid price on the state bid because they didn't bid on it, because they didn't feel they could get the vehicle in time, as I understand, is that correct?
There's, there is another Dodge dealer out of, I think, out of Fremont that had the state bid contract. I, we reached out to them as well, but they are not even producing any. And they said, no, can't, can't even get them. So there is a, availability is a big portion of this as well because there's really not many vehicles out there right now that, that you can even get, so.
You mentioned towing. My recollection is one of the key reasons you didn't want any more three-quarter tons right now is because you had plenty of heavy-duty pickups and you just wanted something a little more efficient. So why, why would we turn away an SSV rated classification that's nine grand cheaper than these units? I'm, you're confusing me a little bit.
Well, it's, they're just, they're a lot lighter duty vehicle though. So even though we'd be getting half tons, that's not to say that we wouldn't eventually want to use these for some kind of light towing. Or even the simple fact of the bed sizes, the, the bed size is about a foot longer on the Fords than it is the SSVs. So by the time you get fuel tanks and toolboxes in there, it leaves you very limited room to even be able to get anything in there. As far as the towing goes, I mean, the SSVs are, really, they're built to not tow hardly anything at all. I guess they're, they're built to tow, but just not.
The differential ratio higher?
On the SSVs, it's a, it's a, a lower ratio actually. So it's built for a little bit higher speeds than, than the Ford models that, that we have the pricing on.
Well, I, I have a little bit of heartburn that we, I understand we left some latitude, but it's kind of, I'm wondering why they bid SSVs other than maybe just for availability.
Well, and that was their question to us whenever he said, well, this is what we have to bid, but it doesn't really fit the bill of what your specs say, which we say, we don't tell them not to bid based on our specs. We just say include your exclusions. And I guess I didn't feel it was right to just tell them not to bid. I mean, that's, if they want to bid it, they need to bid it.
But they only had like one exclusion or something last week, or there's several. I thought there was only like one, one exclusion on it too.
Uh, there's, there's a few. I guess if we need to go table to get to our other one, we can always do that if you guys would like to.
You did have a conversation, there was an acknowledgement from the, from the Janssen bid that this wasn't exactly your specs?
Yes. Yeah, I did have a conversation with them last week.
So they acknowledged?
Just to clarify everything.
They were not in total compliance with what you specced us?
Yes.
But submitted what was available?
Yep.
Is that what I'm getting?
Yep.
Okay. So in this instance, if you opted this direction, what's your ETA? Or does anybody know?
Um, yeah, the ETA would be late January or February. I did reach out to them last week again as well and that's what they stated on theirs was late January or February for delivery of those.
Let, let me read the exceptions if I can. Says front seat is a 40/20/40 clot, may not have center seat. Rear seat will be vinyl. Vinyl floor, no carpet, which great. Interior dome light, larger and centered, which is not applicable. These trucks are SSV's special service vehicle. Have also included a standard option and have highlighted the warranted items, options.
Jason, could you give us your, the impression that you've gotten from both entities in regards to availability of these two types of vehicles that we're looking at?
Well, the, the Fords on the state of Nebraska contracts, those vehicles are in the queue and being built currently. Because I think they had allotted originally 50 in their contract. So, so I think they're readily available. Like he, he was pretty confident in that late January or February delivery date. The other ones, the SSVs, are a little more unknown. He said those, that model doesn't go into production in the factory until January. And then from there, it's simply a matter of priority and how they fit those into the build priority before we would get them. So it's really an unknown. We don't know when we would receive those.
And the three vehicles that you're wanting to replace, what kind of mileage do you have on those three vehicles?
On the three that we would be replaced with these? I think the lowest mileage would be like 86,000. The next one would be 101,500. And I think the other one is 135,000.
Well, I think the delivery and the build, as you mentioned, is certainly a factor that we need to consider.
Also for me, it doesn't make sense to spend $40,000 on something that doesn't fit your needs when spending, I mean, $10,000 is $10,000. But with that spend, if you're getting what you need in a timely manner, no modifications necessary. I mean, with a pickup bed, you can't even make that work for you by modifying it. You'd probably end up spending more trying to make these vehicles fit your picture. And my next question is, how does this fit into your budget?
Our budget would be fine, I guess, considering our overall acquisition budget. Even after this, this purchase, we would still be under our initial budget, so.
I, I, I think that this was probably, correct me if I'm wrong, even a little bit higher than what you'd hoped it had been on a 39, wasn't it?
Maybe a little bit, but yeah, I think what we're, if, if Dodge, I think, would have bid the typical vehicles of the, like the state of Nebraska contracts, you would see that gap narrow quite a bit. So, yeah, that's where it's, it's tended to kind of skew things a little bit, in, in my opinion, just because the models that they bid are not comparable to a lot of the state of Nebraska contracts. Yeah, and these vehicles are, the, the Fords are the, like I said, it's a state Nebraska contract. So it's over at the Department of Roads, right here, they have this exact model that they run every day, so.
Some question I have, we have to, if we choose not to go with Janssen Chrysler, we reject all bids. And then because it's a government contract, we just give the directive for them to go and purchase that, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Just making sure that that's verified for the record.
And one other thing to note is, is that the amount that is in the, that was budgeted was a smaller amount because we did scale back down from three-quarter ton vehicles to half-ton vehicles. So there was a savings inherent there. But I think the fellows have done a remarkable job in making the comparison that what they need to have for, for their work.
I think when we bought the, the 2017 three-quarter ton Dodges, we bought three pickups for under $90,000. And I, these numbers did kind of surprise me. I think those days are over, unfortunately.
They're over for the time being.
For the time being, yeah.
Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman? Do we need to reject the other bid? I make a motion that we reject the previous bid from Janssen Dodge in regards to the three Dodge 1500 SSV vehicles. Half-ton, four-wheel drive.
Half-ton four-wheel-drive four-door pickup trucks.
Motion by Woodruff.
Second.
Second by Wuller. Any further discussion on this?
As I understand, the primary reason wasn't necessarily cost, but was the required specifications to meet the duty of the road department, is that my understanding?
Correct. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye. I would ask that you pursue government contract for the purchase of your three half-ton four-wheel-drive four-door pickup trucks.
We still want to have a motion to let it do that. It's over ten grand. He doesn't have the authority to just do it himself.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be put out for bid, but you do still have to give him a question.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the Lincoln County Road Department to, uh, accept the offer from the state bidding procedure to purchase three new half-ton four-wheel-drive four-door pickups, the F-150 Coupe Cam Formula IV XLT, to fill their need for three vehicles for the Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Second.
Uh, just clarification from my, and I usually get things wrong anyway, but we're actually purchasing the vehicles, so wouldn't the motion just be for us to purchase those vehicles? I mean, they usually act as an agent that goes and goes out and checks prices for us, but we're making the purchase, the county board is. It's a question, Mr. Attorney?
I guess I understood Commissioner Woodruff's motion to be to authorize them to purchase them, obviously doing it.
Oh, okay, so, very good, okay.
I would assume when the board votes to authorize them to do it, you're well aware in giving them, you're telling them to do it.
Okay, very good, thank you. I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wuller. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Next order of business is to receive bids for a used wheel loader for Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Just tearing into that. One of them for Christmas.
That's not compromising the integrity of the whole.
Oh, well.
I think we need a sharper knife.
All right. We have seven copies. This is from Murphy Tractor Equipment Company. Read down that way. Down that way.
Four. That's a good. Beautiful.
I'm going to ask you to hand this over to Jason.
Okay.
Here's the specs. Okay, so, this bid, Murphy Tractor proposes to furnish one six-twenty-four-k loader per year specs, which would be a twenty-eighteen Deere six-twenty-four-k wheel loader with four thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight hours on it, for a net price to the county of one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. This includes an eighty-four-month, six-thousand-hour powertrain and hydraulic warranty, which runs until December eighth of twenty-twenty-five, or six thousand hours, whichever comes first. The availability of this unit is approximately two to three weeks, subject to prior sale. I think that is it. This is from NMC Cat. I'm going to ask you to hand that to Jason. They actually have two bids. Hand that out to Jason. Just going to pass these out to bid number one. Bid number one. NMC Cat's first bid. Bid number two. Bid number two. Is for a twenty-nineteen Cat nine-thirty-eight M, that has eight thousand fifty-two hours on it. Uh, this price, in fact, the net price to the county, is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Does look like it is. Sorry. Don't see, does this have any warranties on it?
No, no warranty.
Okay. And then bid number two is a twenty-nineteen Cat nine-thirty-eight M with eight thousand five hundred and sixty-two hours on it. The list price and net price to the county is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And again, this has no warranty?
No warranty.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hughley.
Whatever the roads department decides to do, but, but I would hope, and especially when it comes to wheel loaders, either wheel loaders or some kind of a dozer, e- even some scrapers, but I would hope that, um, it would be possible for them to have their actual mechanics go and look at these vehicles, uh, you know, um, records show a lot, you know, oil, tests, all of those things show a lot, but there's a lot that it doesn't show when you look at, depending on how these were, if they were used in a gravel pit or something, you know, the intercarriages, you know, there, there are just a lot that doesn't show on, on paper. That's the only comment I have to make, um, when it comes to this kind of purchase.
So, to that point, um, for Murphy, the availability is two to three weeks out. Where's that unit?
It's sitting here. They demoed the unit a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
They, they've seen the unit, they've hands-off the unit, and it's subject to, it's available. Ken Moore and I will come out and go over it, so.
And then for these-
Our is sitting in Omaha, so.
Okay.
Something I noticed by looking at the checklist that accompanies all three bids is, it looks like pretty much each piece of equipment either meets or exceeds the, the checklist item, with the exception of the hours. There is a pretty noticeable difference in the hours on the, on the John Deere wheel loader and, and the two Cat loaders, almost nearly double, right? And I would imagine on a wheel loader, hour, hours of, make a pretty substantial difference in the equipment.
I think, could you-
What's your-
Give us a minute to-
Yeah, absolutely.
Step out and discuss.
I'm just going to suggest, why don't you take a few minutes and step out and discuss?
Yep.
That's why we brought Bruce along here.
It's a gearhead. Okay, while they're discussing that, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, and we'll come back to, uh, taking action on those bids here momentarily. Moving on to discuss and consider setting a date to accept bids for four pickup trucks for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office.
We might.
And what would you know, I think we probably have some available in the area.
We've already got three for them, don't we?
Yeah. All we need is the ones that jury rejected, and we're out of here.
Have you received your last pickup yet?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
There are two of them in town, out of three, so we're waiting on the last one.
We're making progress.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know, we're not harmed any by it. We're still driving.
Yeah, we're driving all their miles, aren't we?
Yeah.
It's okay. It's actually working up our benefit.
I wish you had a lot of repairs in the meantime.
We don't have any, really.
Okay, so, Sheriff, I know that you guys only come to us when you absolutely need something, and you have an idea of what you want, so.
Well, we'd be getting rid of, everything we're getting rid of is nineteen's, except, uh, there's one twenty-twenty in here. And everything is excess of, uh, well, it's all nearly sixty thousand and up, with the exception of one, and it'll be miled out by the time they get here, so, um, so that's the reason we're needing four. Actually, this, this past year should have worked our advantage a couple of years down the road with the miles not showing up on these ones that are sitting out here, wherever they're at.
Correct.
So, we'd be trading off, uh, two, three, two thousand nineteen's and one twenty-twenty.
Okay.
One of those would be a Ford, and the rest are Dodges.
And you're not persnickety, you'll take an SSV, right?
That's what all these will be.
Oh, sorry.
Know they came back.
We talked about that while you were out.
But our-
I couldn't resist.
The bids we put out are specific, so, they'll, they've got to meet them, so.
Okay.
And that open console concept works great for what you folks have to put in there, correct?
We, yeah, if we get anything else, we have to take it out, so. Of course, uh, we could use about a foot wider cab with all the stuff they got in these, these, uh, passenger can't hardly get in them.
What do we have available for?
Twelve-five at ten a.m. Those are wild guesses, aren't they?
Yeah, that's exacting.
Thank you, Becky.
And we got a, we got a call from one of the dealers, said the sooner we get this done, the better, because they are available, but they're using up inventory.
Right, Janson. Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure? Chairman, I move to specify December twelfth at ten a.m. to-
December fifth.
Fifth.
Oh, I'm sorry, December fifth at ten a.m. to consider, accept and consider bids for pickups for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on this? It'll be noted that there will, there will be specified, uh, specs on each unit provided by the Sheriff's Office.
Right. And that usually mirrors what the state has on theirs, and pretty much adopt theirs.
Okay. Any further conversation? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
December fifth at ten a.m. it is. Thank you, gentlemen. Hey, take that, take that grumpy Gus with you while you go, when you go. Don't, don't leave him over there. All right, moving back to the previous agenda item, consider acceptance of bids.
We're going to start having the Sheriff's Office buy our pickups. Um, so after reviewing all the bids, um, I think it would be our recommendation to accept the bid from Murphy for the John Deere six-twenty-four-k, forty-eight hundred and sixty-eight hours, for a net price of a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Um, it does have remaining warranty, um, and is quite a bit lower on hours than the other two that were bid. And also, um, Ken, our head mechanic, has actually already looked at this machine, so, he went out there and, um, was in there for the demo process, too, so he found no issues.
Okay.
So, you guys have that as well.
Colleagues of mine?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Lincoln County Road Department accepting the bid for Murphy Tractor for one John Deere six-twenty-four-k loader at a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Wuller, second by Hughley. Any further discussion on this? And so, Jason, just for the record, your two primary, um, concerns were the fact that this one's got lower hours, significantly lower hours, and it also brings a warranty along with it.
Yes, yeah.
And you have, as you said, laid eyes on it?
Yep.
Like what you see?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Again, I think it goes without saying, we, we appreciate, uh, all the interested parties supplying their bids. We got good partnerships with both entities, so look forward to maintaining those relationships moving forward. Roll call vote, please.
Wuller?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There was some supplemental material that Jason has for both of those, Becky. Do we have a need for a closed session? Okay. Moving on to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. I'll leave this, uh- I'll leave this item open as we finish signing the remainder of the claims. FYI. That way we have time as we go through these individually if there's something that are not just carte blanche, already accepted.
You can't sign it if you have a second one?
Yeah, you can. I think you can. The motion is what actually approves it, it's the signatures. We can always rip up the signature page. I already talked with Tyler on it. But whereas it stands right now, we make the motion.
Well, we still...
As the...
We still modify our motion and rescind something that we don't approve, so I don't know if it's, I don't see the value in it. We've held claims before. Nice and bright.
Mm-hmm.
Type.
That's what was so odd about the other one, because they've been having them really show up.
Yes.
While we're all here, for the Casey Nils auction, were we gonna see if the commissioners together wanted to donate something, or?
We can, I already did something for Mitch and I, I took a basket over there, but I can do another one from the board.
I'm just gonna do something on my own, I mean, simpler that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
When is that coming up?
December 10th. I'm making soup, so if anybody has any garden vegetables you'd like to donate, I'll pay them.
Raleigh, are you helping with that, gather stuff?
Oh, I'm just, I can't be.
That's it?
I make sure to get people there.
Oh, wow, well, we should double our crowd then.
Boy, if they knew I was coming.
How about Lieutenant Dane?
We have people, our office managers.
They're handling that?
She's on top of it.
You're gonna want silent auction items, is that right?
She's all crippled up.
What is she doing, Raleigh?
The road department is, does have plans underway for the access equipment stuff, they're getting that kind of stuff together, so there will be some work in that regard. Does that money come back to the roads department, or do we?
No, sir.
General fund? Just like it does with everything else, if they were to give her the coal burns or anything else, it goes back to the general fund.
It's totally encumbered that way, and it can be redistributed.
And it just helps the budget in the future to have that cash.
So that explains where in the past a lot of things were done with trade-ins at a disadvantage to the county. Possibly.
So with that said, if other departments have items that they would like to add to that, that can happen too?
Sure.
Like auto building and grounds?
I don't know, why not? Absolutely.
Yeah, you do.
They use what?
Isobels.
Oh, Isobels, yes.
Because there's usually not enough furniture typically doesn't garner a whole...
I wasn't thinking furniture, they have some equipment that we've been having some conversation about.
Where is building and grounds looking at?
They would like to explore getting a bobcat skin steer as opposed to the little tractor that they have, which they've had for a very long time, it seems like, sounds like.
Had that conversation about three years ago, and there's some downside to that, too.
Yeah.
Because those things tear up turf, something tears. Snow around, you don't see what you did.
Well, it sounds like that happens with the tractor too, because the wheelbase on the tractor is wider than the sidewalks.
Than the sidewalks.
But they felt like they could get a bobcat.
You know, we used to have a good thing that went around on the sidewalks, they chose not to use it. Okay?
Okay.
Goes back a long ways.
So they have what, something that they put down?
We had a mower that had a cover on it that worked great for the sidewalks, they chose not to use that.
Oh, and use the tractor instead?
That's correct. But it did fit down the sidewalks, not even the one over there. I sent over a letter.
Not that I'm aware of.
Telling you guys we needed a larger transport van for the federal prisoners. Oh, it was just on my budget, I had it added to my budget, that's why you might have been aware of it. But we found a used one, they're kind of specific because they have to have the seats in there just right to get prisoners in, and I kinda wanted something pretty heavy duty because you're getting, you know, 10 to 12, 230 pound guys in there. We found one that's used, but due to the specifics of it, you're not gonna go out to bid and find anything here. But it is on an auction site.
Okay.
So we're kinda wondering how to go about that. We're satisfied with the van, and it won't bring over 30,000, maybe 35.
Sheriff, what is this one doing?
Could be to transport prisoners, come out of the jail budget.
Back here, you mean, back and forth, this transport?
Oh, no, these would be going to Grand Island and Omaha, these would be federal prisoners.
Oh.
These are safe keepers.
And they pay us for the transport?
So we'd be getting paid mileage plus two deputies to run this thing all the time, we'd be $70 an hour plus mileage.
What do you do now?
A lot of times we take two vans and four people, but we get paid for those four people, but we're probably filling that with overtime back here.
So you mentioned fed specs, is that, you talk about the seating thing?
Well, no, they just require one armed, one unarmed, we have to send two, two security with all of their people.
You would keep the van that you have?
We'll get rid of the big white one, we can't use it, it doesn't have seat belts, and it's really only good for local, but we don't have a need for it local. We've had it 10 or 12 years and probably haven't put 3,000 miles on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it have enough body?
No, it's a 98, low mileage, it's a good van.
It is, it is a good van, yeah.
For the right person.
This one's anticipated to what price?
Well, it has to bring over 30, it's a government vehicle, it's on a state bid.
Okay.
Yeah, so really the bid price is kinda set, because it is a government vehicle. So 30's the least they'll take, right now it's sitting at 25, and there's been no interest, so.
What did you have budgeted?
60.
Makes sense.
Sounds like it's more cost effective to do one trip instead of two.
Well, it is, and it's a diesel unit, it's a little older, it's what, a 2000?
Seven, but it's only got 11,000 miles on it.
Oh, wow.
You guys don't wanna hold out for a Tesla truck?
No, better by...
It's not an SSV, but...
So Sheriff, I guess the big thing when it comes to vans, you know, DOT and everybody changes about every five years on vans, you know, the safety thing and the federal people, we're all good on that, on a van, you know, a number of passengers and all, any other crap that we might have, stay legal with everything on that.
Well, we haven't checked them that specifically, but they're using these.
Okay.
It's a 13 passenger van, just like, you know, you would, the schools would use, but this one has a larger cab and the seating, I could show you pictures if you wanna look at it.
The seating's staggered, so the guys with the leg irons can get in and out a little better.
I don't wanna let you touch my phone, really.
I really don't wanna touch your phone.
I wouldn't like your friends on it.
Me neither, I might go down, up the river on something, trumped up yard.
It wouldn't be trumped up in your face, but that's what it's like, it's a spring van.
I don't like the color.
It's Hershey Blue. It's got a good side door on it that you just virtually know where to get to the side door that really like for getting prisoners in, we would design some sort of cage.
Where's it come from?
You don't wanna know.
So nobody died in it, so it's not...
It's for all these guys.
When does the, when do the bids close?
Two days.
I think it's...
Did you talk to the...
There's a mileage change.
Have you ever met Tyler?
I think it's North Carolina.
Well, I can't think his last name, have you ever met our attorney? And did you ask him a question about how this would work?
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, we're not gonna stick our neck out unless he says we can.
He knows we can, but it's got those side open borders like a regular bus on a van, and that's it.
We don't like it when he says, "I told you so."
It's got a wheelchair ramp in the back as well.
Well, that'd be good.
We have one person that we need to haul all the time. They stagger it out, anyways, you'll get that.
We'd have a little bit of modification to make it secure with the side windows and stuff. It broke out from...
The sheriff?
They can have that with any of them.
You said this was in your budget?
It's got freight candy all the time.
And you budgeted 60 for it, and it probably...
Well, that line item's 60, I don't remember what else we take out of there, but we did have it added to this year, so.
How's that look, Tyler? How's that work, where the bids end in two days?
Well, my problem isn't so much the, it's not the, what's it called, because it does appear to be a unique or dogged item, but some brands are born and still have to give it its own.
They're trustworthy.
Yeah, this one will take, I'll take all the blame on it if it is, that's my idea, so, not that that means anything.
So there's not any way to do that?
Well, let me reread this patch here, there's nothing you can do right now.
Right.
Right.
So, that, legal and read doesn't change what you can't do right now, it's a matter of whether it's okay to give it, just that after the fact.
This is up for bid right now?
Mm-hmm.
Bid closes in two days.
So, the way these work, if they don't get their minimum, which we know the minimum is 30, then they go to the public.
Oh.
But right now, government's the only ones that can bid on them.
Oh, I see. Well, I would, I guess I would say in theory, if the attorney said this is unique, and I don't know, I wouldn't, he doesn't have any qualms with us approving it, if you stick your neck out and own it, then I, I think I'm reading that we're okay.
Don't read me.
But that's what the attorney's, it's in his hands. If it is truly unique, sounds like it is. Raleigh, have you looked at any other units?
We've looked all over the U.S., and this site even goes into Canada, and anything comparable, they're starting out at $70,000, $80,000 if you...
And this is what you're...
It's an '07, and it has a diesel engine in it with 11,000 miles. It come from Virginia, right, DC, so I'm sure they haul government people around.
So what about payment?
Well, I talked to you last week, they have to have an electronic payment.
That was my only other thing, is how we'd approve, I mean, we can figure out the wire, but have you guys approved the claim?
Mr. Attorney, still in open session, we're still in meeting.
When was the wire, like the day you bid it, or?
The question that I would have is...
Seven days?
Five working days, so...
Because of the... I don't wanna call it an emergency, I'm trying to find the right word, we know that how it works on, you know, one of a kind or unique items, that's a different thing, try to go out and get a couple of things, I get that, but is there a way that because of the time that we weren't able to be notified in time, you know, in other words, to have our regular notice go out in the paper in time we found out about it today, and would that constitute an emergency, I don't know, to amend the agenda, I mean, we can amend the agenda, I know that we can do that, but to allow this item on to take action today, I guess that would be my question, I had a hard time wording it. So my question would be, can we amend the agenda because of the late time that we found out about it? To me, it does constitute a, something that has to be acted on prior to the next meeting.
That I disagree with, I don't think it's up, if that's an emergency, what is it?
Right, so is there any other way to do that, other than declaring it an emergency?
What I'm trying to look at right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I thought the word urgent instead of emergency.
I didn't hear you.
Said, "Take it out of your donor budget, take..."
I'll tell you what, you must have, you'll fiver on that vehicle, you put some thing that...
These are for the recycling.
I didn't drive my vehicle today.
I've decided to do it the day of the...
I didn't see that, see that Tahoe with expired blades anywhere out there.
How about the word urgent instead of emergency?
Well, I didn't hear you.
I didn't.
Said, take it out of your donor budget, take.
Well, I tell you what, your tires on that vehicle.
For the recycled.
I didn't drive my vehicle today.
I didn't see that, see that Tahoe with expired plates anywhere out there.
Oh, it's.
Seven working days electronically. Or set five working days, seven days, and it closes in two, so.
Okay, I wasn't paying attention, say this again.
So it's a, you keep your note in the file.
Right.
We have.
It's a specifically arranged prison transport, right, that's satisfied, right?
Right.
So we assume once we need, okay, just buy it, obviously the board did not have on the agenda today authorization for them to actually purchase the vehicle. I can't find any way to get it on in front of you today. They don't actually have to have the money wired until, maybe the next.
Next Monday, I, well, it's five working days from Wednesday, so.
Put it on the agenda.
To put it on the agenda and actually consent to repurchase the next vehicle.
Perfect.
So as long as, next week you would be consenting to repurchase, which they would already signed up to make.
But you'd have to Tuesday to try and finish the transaction.
There wouldn't be any money changed hands till after the meeting?
No money would change hands until board perfect, and if I guess if you say no, I'm sure there's some fee, and come out of their budget for not going through the bid.
Okay.
So there you go, solve that problem.
There you go.
We stay in legal, cool water, good.
It's a solution to everything.
Yep.
Sometimes it's donuts, sometimes it's chicken.
Mm-hmm.
Donuts are sweeter.
And Becky, that timeframe gives you time to figure out how to do the trans, the electronic transaction.
We'll have to figure it out.
I'll take care of that.
The conversation I had with the dealer, they're very easy to work with, sounded like.
It would probably be a lot easier to transfer that money from the general fund.
Nice try.
Nice try.
Nice.
It is from the general fund.
Pretty, pretty low key.
Getting in the murky water now, huh?
With that said, I think Joe wants to talk to you about a car wash injury out in the hallway.
Oh, yeah.
I was talking to him about this. He didn't see any warning signs of a high pressure.
Clearly says handicap people are in the road. It's not responsible for accidents.
Not responsible for commissioner accidents, is what it says, I read it this morning.
I have a witness, it was a malfunction on the equipment.
Sure was.
Malfunction somewhere.
I would take with your past medical history and the last couple of years that that's just norm.
And you're right, the attorney is right, there was not warning about high pressure. I'm not, I'm not saying anymore at this time.
Becky, did you have anything for us?
No, I'm so correct, it's gonna work, I mean, we can't just approve that claim, I gotta have money for all the claims in the bank. I can't do a wire without the money, so we gotta have, my payroll person, my account payment person's taken on, so, we'll figure it out, I don't know, I don't, I'm. Your problem, Raleigh.
I've always known that.
Should we take a, should we take a vote?
Whether Raleigh's a problem or not.
Yeah.
I mean, you did four work.
I did, before we.
Tammy, did you have anything?
Yeah, she was a little, she was a little distracted.
Did you call me election day?
No, it wasn't election day. No, 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 no. Say that again.
Ebony Cuxley for Mixed Link, they're one of the providers that provide broadband.
Hey, Raleigh. Raleigh, that Tahoe is legal, by the way. Now. You.
Well, it's a super poor area code.
Is that a walk-in stall?
Yeah, how you got a broken tail light there?
What do they want to do, Tammy?
Sounds suspect to me.
Mixed Link.
What about them?
Is a broadband provider. So she was wondering if we had anything going on out here for broadband, because there's so much money available.
They're looking for business.
We do.
Yeah, they're looking for business, they're, she's, sounds like she's asking for utilizing hard fun dollars or anything for broadband expansion. I would point her in the direction of the Public Service Commission. Okay, anything else?
Yes, I had a spank give you guys a letter, I gave it to you.
I. I spoke with her on Thursday as well and told her she needs to reach out to the treasurer's office, because we give a lot of that discretion to the treasurer's for his banking relationships.
With the emphasis on return on investment.
Exactly. All right, we stand adjourned at ten fifty-three a.m.